... This is working.
I'll proceed to go to Lee's collection. I will, I will come around. Give me your money, I will come around with the bags.
Sorry for the cheesy glass. It costs the same.
Oh, I love it.
Good.
I was happy.
Call, call the public hearing and regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, December 10th to order. May we stand for the pledge allegiance? Everything's changed.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, will you roll, call the roll, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. You have to excuse us, the, the room is new, so we, the flags used to be here, and the microphones, this is our first night with microphones, and so, if you see us playing around, please, please excuse us. First item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. If anybody has anything to bring forward, please do so. Thank you so much.
I have a question. What are they doing with Woodward Avenue?
Can you come, I'm sorry, you have, you have to come to the podium and give us your name, your address.
You can't hear me, otherwise, right?
No, that's right.
Hi, I'm Louise Sahami.
Hi.
And I've been watching the orange barrels on Woodward Avenue. What is the plan?
Uh, well, that project's done. So the orange barrels have all been pulled off the street, they're just awaiting collection at this point. So all the lanes are back open. That was related to a, a reconfiguration of the intersection here at Oakland Park and Woodward. So, we had five lanes here, because we had a dedicated right turn lane on Oakland Park, and one of the, um, uh, comments we often got was that it was dangerous and felt unsafe crossing the street as a pedestrian. Uh, the geometry was a little bit weird because of the way the lanes were angled, so if you were crossing the street from the median to the side of Oakland Park, cars couldn't see you when you were in the crosswalk, so you often had cars, and then cars would come driving through the crosswa, uh, through the right turn lane without stopping. Um, and this is the only place we've had pedestrians killed. So that was a, a project to improve pedestrian safety by shortening and changing the geometry for those crossings.
What are going to be the safeguards to keep the drivers from plowing right into it?
There's going to be crosswalk poles, and there'll be poles there, there's striping on the street.
Okay. Cause I looked at that and went, I like it two lanes, not three. They could've left the orange barrels. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on, next item is the Centennial Homes Presentation. John Wright? You have the floor.
John Wright, Ten Kemberton, from the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission. Tonight, we are honoring homes and people who live in them. This is the, uh, night of the, uh, presentation for the plaques for hundred-year homes, homes that were built a hundred years ago, and we have some of the homeowners here tonight. This is the plaque that will be presented. Uh, people who aren't here will still be able to come up to City Hall and pick up their plaque. These are from ProPublic tile, they've done most of our plaques for the home tours, and there's even a, a wall of ProPublic tiles in the Wellness Center as well. And we have a, uh, some slides that, uh, okay.
What would you like me to do with them, John?
So, go ahead and, uh, let's just, I, I haven't seen this, so.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
We improved it.
Amber Harrow and Kokotovich did it. Okay. Seventeen Poplar Park? Homies.
Yes. Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Cool.
Fourteen Poplar Park. And the next will be nineteen? Oh, fifteen Kemberton Drive. Did you let her here this evening? Congratulations. And the next home, seventeen Oakland Park. And beautiful home. They're all beautiful. And the next home is nineteen Poplar Park. Okay, good. Nineteen Poplar Park. And then twenty Poplar Park, the Talpuses. Aren't out here this evening? And it's a funny thing, the pop, uh, the Talpuses moved up from, uh, Kemberton, from fifteen Kemberton, sold it to the Gillets, and so they have a real history with, uh, old homes.
That's their year.
Yes. Next home is twenty-three Elm Park. Beautiful. That's Renee and Larry's? Oh, okay, they're, they're not here. And then we have twenty-four Poplar Park. And twenty-six Oakland Park. The Laid Laws.
Mine too.
And our next home is twenty-six Elm Park.
Bless you.
And then thirty-two Elm Park, Betty Cooper.
I want to thank my park, my house for being built a hundred years ago.
We expect all of you here for the next, uh, celebration, another hundred years.
If not, my house will be.
Thirty-two Ridge Road. And next is thirty-six Oakland Park. All those older pictures are from nineteen fifty-seven assessor's records, which we have next door in the museum, and all residents and friends are welcome to take a look at their home's, uh, history, and also to put pictures and data and anything they care to in those files, so the next owners or the owners after them can go through there and take a look and see the way it used to be. Fifty Oakdale of the Johnsons. And fifty-four Ridge. Okay. One thirty-two Cambridge. And that's it.
Yay!
Very good.
Nice.
Again, if you're watching, uh, over the tube, we, uh, come up to City Hall, and we have the plaques up here as well, for, uh, people of hundred-year centennial homes. Thanks again.
Thanks so much, John. Appreciate it. We were just commenting that, um, once we get into the twenties, we're gonna be hard-pressed to have
We'll have lots of them every
Hundreds. That's right. Okay, the next item is the receiving and filing of the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Aaron Stevens to present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so I have a, a slideshow here, a PowerPoint presentation. But to, uh, start off, first of all, I'd like to, to thank Carolyn from Plant Moran and the city administration and staff for their courtesy cooperation and assistance. Field work went very well, as usual. Uh, what I plan to do tonight is, is highlight, uh, just the, the key areas of the general fund, the operating fund for the city. And then, uh, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those, uh, as they come up. But first of all, if you, uh, like you go to the, well, that's me, Aaron Stevens from Manor Custerston. Uh, the independent auditors' report is on pages one and two of the bound document that you have. Uh, but I've highlighted a few things on, on the next slides, uh, that follow. Uh, this is from the first, um, page, the second paragraph. The financial statements are management's responsibility, and that, that includes the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements, as well as the internal controls over that preparation and fair presentation. Uh, our responsibility as auditors, uh, on the next slide, is to express opinions on the financial statements based on our audit. And this is, uh, this is taken from the first page in the third paragraph of the independent auditor's report. And then we express our opinions on the second page, first paragraph, uh, where it reads, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." And that is what we refer to as an unmodified opinion, that is a, a clean opinion, it is the highest level of assurance that we can provide for a set of financial statements, and that's, that's what you want to see as a board of commissioners. On pages eleven and thirteen, we get into the governmental funds, financial statements presentation, and governmental funds are prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting. Uh, they have a current financial resources focus. And again, I'm gonna highlight the general fund here. Uh, the, the balance sheet that is on page eleven is a snapshot as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, of your assets, liabilities, and the difference between the two is fund balance. And the fund balance for the general fund as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen was nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. That, that's the total fund balance. And there are, uh, potentially five classifications of fund balance that you could have. Uh, your general fund only happens to have two of these, uh, they have non-spendable fund balance and the unassigned fund balance. And unassigned fund balance is what you have available for future use. And so what I do is I like to compare the unassigned fund balance to your expenditures and other financing uses or, or transfers out to the other funds, um, to see what, uh, how much fund balance you have at the end of the year. And so you had nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance compared to your expenditures and other financing uses. That represents thirty-three percent of your annual expenditures and other financing uses. At June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, the general fund had twenty-six percent, uh, fund balance. So the, uh, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you maintain a minimum fund balance in your general fund that is equal to two months' worth of normal operations. Uh, two out of twelve months is about seventeen percent, and you're at thirty-three percent. Uh, and the city, as we discussed before the meeting, the city does have, uh, an established goal of maintaining a general fund fund balance of twenty-five to thirty percent, and so you've, you've achieved that, uh, and a little bit higher. Um, the five-year bar graph here on the next slide, it shows you, uh, the, the past five years, general fund revenues, expenditures, and total fund balance. And as you can see, your revenues have exceeded your expenditures in each of the past five years. Uh, so you've added to your fund balance, that, uh, that yellow bar represents the total fund balance, and it is on an upward trend, uh, which is excellent to see. The next, uh, slide, we have a, a pie chart that details the composition of your general fund revenues. Largest source of revenue for the general fund is, of course, property taxes at sixty-eight percent. Um, it's pretty consistent with the previous year. Uh, the second largest source of funds is intergovernmental revenue at ten percent, and that would primarily consist of your state share revenues or your sales tax. And then this bar graph represents the, uh, the past three years' total revenue. Uh, so in two thousand and nineteen, your total revenue for the general fund was three million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, that is up about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the two thousand and eighteen revenues, and, and the breakdown is, uh, provided there for you as well. And then the next pie chart, we have, uh, the expenditures and other financing uses. Uh, so largest, uh, use of funds for the general fund is public safety at forty-seven percent, and that would be followed by general government at twenty-four percent. Again, fairly consistent with the composition from two thousand and eighteen. Similar bar graph here for the past three years, um, showing you the, the expenditures and other financing uses, so this does include the transfers out to the other funds. Uh, total expenditures did increase from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, expenditures were about two-point-eight million, and then transfers out were about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, to, uh, to other funds. So the results for the year is you, uh, you added to your fund balance, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, this line graph shows you the past five years, the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. Um, and it, again, has an upward trend, uh, which is what you wanted to see, and, uh, and it peaks out at the thirty-three percent that I mentioned earlier. And then this line graph is in terms of dollars, um, showing you the, uh, the, the blue bar represents the actual dollars, uh, in, in the, um, unassigned fund balance, uh, compared to the minimum recommendation of that seventeen percent from the GFOA, uh, which is the, the other line, the brownish-red line at the bottom there. So it gives you a visual perspective of just how well you've done in the general fund for the past five years. So I went through that very quickly, but, uh, but we did have a chance to talk about it in detail uh, prior to the meeting at the workshop, um, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone with questions?
All right, well, thank you very much. Again, thanks to the city, uh, for their, their help, appreciate it. And we'll see you next year.
Good news.
This is good news.
Aaron gets better at this every year, so it's Okay, the next item on the agenda is governmental
We need to
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, boy, I just got ahead of myself. We have to receive it, don't we? Um, do I have a motion to receive and file the audited statements?
Your honor, I move the audit of the city's, um, financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, be received and filed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion approved. Now we move on to governmental reports. I just, I just wanted to hear from the fire chief and the chief of police, you know.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I hope you had a good Thanksgiving, and I wish you guys all a good holiday season approaching here.
Same to you.
I wanted to put out the announcement that we have a CERT team that's been reestablished four months ago. CERT represents Citizen Emergency Response Team. I know a couple Pleasant Ridge, um, residents are a part of that. We meet the second, in the second, uh, Wednesday and Thursday of each month. It's an hour and a half training. Uh, what CERT does is they learn basic, um, emergency things, and they would be deployed if there was a storm to assist police or fire in either community for, like, wires down. They would sit on the wires for us, they would protect that area. If, if, God forbid, but if there was, uh, something major that happened, they would be deployed for that as well. Some other cities deploy them for when we have large-scale fires, for traffic control and whatnot, but it's a good, um, organization, a good way to give back to your community as well. Totally free, uh, you'd be issued equipment, and you would be trained well. Um, just, if you, if anyone's interested at home or in the audience, they can contact me, or they can go to the Ferndale website and go under the fire section and find that. Moving on, I wasn't here last month, I had someone fill in for me, but since I've seen you guys, we've had about seven or eight fires. Six of those were what I call the holiday fires. So we had some unattended cooking fires, where kitchens were destroyed from, you know, people not keeping an eye on what they're doing in the kitchen, or they're not used to cooking, and they get out the, get ready for the holiday, and they start cooking. It happens every year. We had a fire on Amherst, I can't remember the address, about three weeks ago, and that was a chimney fire. Luckily for the residents, and they were very thankful for, um, the service they got, but somebody was walking down the street, I believe, and they saw flames coming out of the chimney, so they alerted the people, they didn't know their house was on fire. So they alerted the people, the residents, uh, called fire. They had a lot of kerosene built up in their chimney flue, but then it was, um, you know, wear and tear on the, on the firebox after a number of years, you should have that inspected. So the mortar broke down in between the fire bricks, got in the walls back there. So when you get a fire in the walls, it can get up in the attic, and that's, that's bad. It was stopped, it was taken care of, but it was a significant amount of damage. But they're still able to live there and get their, their repairs made, you know, thank goodness. Um, we had a fire last night, it was, uh, or yesterday afternoon, it was a attic fire. That wasn't related to the holiday fires, but that was more on the rain and, um, poor condition of the home, basically. So that one got up in the attic too, and I live in a different city, and a week ago, the house down the street from me, it's like one of the nicest houses in the city, burnt to the ground from an, a chimney fire. It got up in the attic and took off. So I want everyone to be careful, everyone to be safe. Um, not trying to bring everyone's mood down here, I'm sorry. But, um, I know that I've talked to Commissioner Perry before about the home inspections. I've only had two takers so far, I'd like to see that go up. It's where the fire department comes in, does an assessment of your home, free of charge. You wouldn't be ticketed for anything, it's not like a business. We have to be invited into your home. It takes thirty to forty-five minutes, and we go through and do a checkpoint list, find the recommendations, we'll email, email them back to you, we'll even, um, help you find ways to resolve those things. Usually not costly, you might have to replace an outlet or hire a contractor to get your chimney inspected professionally. Make sure if you hire contractors licensed and insured and bonded, okay? Um, that's all I have, I just hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's a great thing. We should promote that more.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Uh, like Chief Pachet says, happy holidays to everybody. Really, the only thing that, uh, we have going on that we see, and it's nationwide, not just locally, but I hear it on the radio, is the package thieves. They're everywhere, so if you're gonna get, everybody gets packages delivered to their home via Amazon or the postal service or whatever, see if you can get them delivered, um, to the back, or maybe your neighbors, if you're, see your neighbors have packages on their porch, pick them up for them and, you know, hang on them, don't go through them. I picked up, my neighbors picked up mine and said, "Thanks for the Keurig the other day." So, and having been a victim of package thieves off the porch, I know how frustrating it can be. So, lot, lot of, uh, agencies across the country suggest that you could get your packages delivered to City Hall or the police department. I didn't ask the boss yet, but I could see if, if you want to get them delivered here to the police department side, not City Hall side, we'd be happy to hang on to them for you. So you ensure that you get that. Um, there are crews that follow the trucks into the neighborhoods, wait for them to drive away, and then just go around and snag the packages off the porch. So just be wary of that. Um, again, always lock your car doors and windows. If you're shopping, um, don't leave packages, try to put them in your trunk. And then, like, uh, a lot of suggests, I remove your car, like, put the packages in and then drive to a different spot, cause in case somebody was watching you, load all those packages in your car, and then you go back into the mall or something. Most people shop online now, but if you still are a mall shopper, um, people do watch for that, be wary of that. Um, they also know that you're carrying cash or have gifts of the expensive nature, especially like at a jewelry store or something, so be wary of people around you that could be targeting you for a crime. So, it's a shame that you have to be this way and live like this, but it's the nature of the beast. The police can't be everywhere, we try to be. We typically will watch the package trucks come in and kind of follow around and, uh, watch. So far, we haven't had any knocking on the new wood here, hopefully it's lucky. So, any, that's all I have today. Any questions? Good, smooth me in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. All right. Next item on the agenda, ordinance to amend this Pleasant Ridge city code by the addition of a new section, thirty-four dash fifty-two fourteen, establishing a maximum sound level for mechanical equipment in residential areas, and by the addition of a new section, eighty-two dash one ninety-three nine, regarding the location of air conditioners and generators in the side yard. Before we open the public hearing, Jim, do you have any few comments?
Quickly.
Quickly.
We discussed this last month, but, uh, this is an issue that we deal with, uh, somewhat, um, regularly, if infrequently. Uh, but, uh, what the proposed ordinance amendment would do would be to first place a, uh, set, uh, noise level for, uh, air conditioner compressors. Sixty decibels at the property line. Um, this is something that we get complaints about sometimes, and we don't have a specific standard right now. It's a general nuisance that doesn't have any kind of sound limit, so how do you enforce that? That's, you know, very much up to interpretation. So sixty decibels is a, uh, fairly standard, uh, level of sound that's allowed for these types of, of, uh, equipment. Some communities, uh, limited to fifty-five decibels, but in a denser, closer urban environment such as ours, where the houses are closer together, sixty's a more reasonable level that's achievable. Um, and any, any, uh, modern, um, air conditioner compressor is, is gonna be able to comply with this standard. So the other part of this is, uh, the other thing that we run into is, uh, air conditioner compressor units in the side yard. Most of the time, it's not an issue, but sometimes it is where those are placed. So what the, uh, proposed ordinance amendment would do would be to require all air conditioner compressor units to be located in a rear yard, unless approval is granted by the adjacent neighbor for the unit to be in a side yard. Um, and this requires a notarized letter signed by the neighbor. So it's a, it's a consent process, so the neighbor at least is informed of where that's going, um, and, uh, has the ability to, I guess, influence the location of that so that we can hopefully maintain good neighbor relations. It also includes requirements for screening, and establishes that units may not be located closer than two feet to a side property line if permission is granted. Um, and then there are, there is a, a further, um, blow-off valve in the ordinance where if it's one-hundred percent impossible to locate this in a rear yard, then the city, we can administratively grant a waiver to allow it to go in the side yard. Uh, but that would have to be demonstrated that there's no possible way to meet the standards of the ordinance. So that's what the ordinance would do. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions on it, um, either now or after the public hearing.
Were there any questions before?
Yeah, what would make it impossible to put in the rear yard?
Um, you know, if they had a driveway location, depending on where the interior, uh, you know, mechanical units are. If your furnace unit is at one corner of the house, and there's something on the inside of the house, or, you know, if there's a, a deck or garage, or there's, there's, you know, basically, it could be where there's structures. Um, or, you know, hardscape that makes it impossible or difficult to move those pipes through.
So if a resident has their air conditioner on this, in their side yard currently, and then they have to replace it, do they need to get the approval of their neighbors at that point, or?
To replace it, under these standards, yes, they would.
Okay. And then, um, but a neighbor's approval helps waive the other issues?
Correct.
Okay, and what, cool, they have to get a signed letter?
Right.
Okay.
And this is, uh, this is actually the same process that I believe Farmington, and I know that Huntington Woods uses this process.
Now, when the planning commission was talking about this, there was, they were also talking, what was the situation with the generators also, like, the permanent generators that are?
So permanent generators require the, would require the signed approval to be in the side yard, but the generators are not subject to the noise ordinance.
Okay.
Because you're using a generator when the power's out, it's a very infrequent occurrence, and, you know, understand that.
And they're not rated as consistently.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And the generator's not running at night, or
I think that's fair.
Yeah. But the location of it, because it is a mechanical unit that's in a side yard that would be visible, that would have to be, um, again, signed off by the neighbor if you wanted to put it in your side yard. As a rule, generators, we don't see nearly as many of them proposed for a side yard as do the air conditioning units.
Thank you.
Any other questions before public hearing? Okay. Open the public hearing. Anybody who has any, anything to say about the ordinance?
I have a couple of questions. I was at the, Jay Ahmed at ninety-two Kensington. So I was at the planning commission meeting, and I heard Jim make some of the same points that he's made tonight. Just to resolve my own concerns, so when you say that the ordinance regarding placement of these units in the side yard, because our house has a air conditioner unit in a side yard and a whole home generator in our side yard, which the city approved of. And so, and I asked this question, and Jim said last time, "Well, you're gonna be grandfathered in," essentially, "if the city ordinance doesn't require you now to sort of post facto now move your, your units." So that, I don't have to go to my neighbor and get a signed letter approving the placement of where they are currently, correct?
Right, that's correct. Anything that's in the ground, located right now, you don't have to do anything.
But if I replace them, then I would have to do that.
Correct.
And I guess I'm hung up on the term "replace." I mean, are we talking about if I have to have, say, my generator goes kerplunk, and I have to have a new one put in? This one is on a pad, which they installed, because the city said it was okay to put it there, then I would have to, if I'm replacing it, build a new pad or put it somewhere else in my backyard now?
Or talk to your neighbor.
Or talk to my neighbor.
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
Is that a problem?
I don't know. It's a, the house next to ours is a rental home, so I would presume that would come from the landowner who I don't think I've ever met before. But I, I mean, I guess that concerns me somewhat, because it's, it just seems odd that the city approves it and I should be able to rely on the city saying it's okay to put it here. And I put it there and now if I have to replace it, now I've got to go seek my neighbor to say it's okay. And I'm pretty sure no neighbor's gonna say, "Yeah, it's okay to have that whole home generator essentially right next to their rental home." Because it's loud when it goes on. And had we known when we were building it or putting it in that, look, you know, a year from now, they're gonna say you can't have it there, or if you replace it, you're gonna have to move it, doesn't quite seem to pass the fairness test to me. Because I don't know what's gonna happen to the generator. Something could hap, a tree limb could fall on it and then I've got to replace it. And now I've got to move it somewhere that I paid a significant amount of money to put in there. And now I've got to go seek the neighbor to say, "Is it okay that I had this really loud generator when it goes on right next to your rental unit?" I'm gonna guess he's gonna say, "No, I'm not really down with that." And now I've got to incur the expense, again, to beat the now really dead horse that the city said was okay to put there.
But you're assuming that new ordinances never get written for any city? I mean, or any new laws? I mean, anytime something changes, obviously, everything before that was grandfathered and anything after that would be changed. I mean, this is just a simple, and then you're assuming that your neighbor is not going to be down with it. You don't know that.
I wouldn't be. If someone come and said to me, "I'm gonna have a generator right next to your house. Is it okay if I put it right here?" My preference would be to know, to say no. And when you say, "We're gonna build neighbor relations," to me, what you're gonna do is divide neighbors. Because now you're gonna say, "No, I don't want that. Now I'm pissed off at that guy." And now I'm gonna think, "Well, what can I do to piss him off too?" And that doesn't really promote, to me, neighbor relations. We haven't had any complaints about where it is, but again, I can't imagine that anyone's a big fan of having that place there. And where we told at the outset that this was not acceptable, then we wouldn't have located it there, but we did. And again, I don't know what's gonna happen with the generator. But to your point that, well, you know, ordinance has changed. Sure, they do. But you can't enact an ordinance that essentially is a post facto law to say, "Okay, it was good when we initially approved it, but now it's not." And that, to me, if you're gonna grandfather it in, it should be grandfathered in permanently. It shouldn't be dependent on whether or not I have to replace it, because like all units, it's going to have to be replaced eventually. And so, you're just, it's just, just waiting for something to happen and then I've got to move it to the backyard now, apparently my air conditioner and my generator, if and when both of them stop working and if I have to replace them. I think I should be able to rely on what the city eventually, initially did, which was to say it's okay to put it there. Now, for future builds, I understand that people will know from this point going forward, assuming the commission passes this, that you've got to put this somewhere else. But we did not know. And we were not told. And so now what you're saying is, well, if something happens, you've got to replace it. Sorry about your luck. You're gonna have to move it to your backyard now. And sorry about the expense that you went through. And sorry that you relied on the commission or the city to say this was okay to put here, but we're gonna now change the rules. I don't, again, I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right. So, I'm here tonight to voice that concern. So I appreciate you listening to me.
Thanks, Jay.
Are there any other comments, questions? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. So now, do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Your Honor, I move that ordinance 438 to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code by the addition of a new section 34-5214, establish a maximum sound level for mechanical equipment in residential areas and by the addition of a new section 82-1939 regarding the location of air conditioners and generators in the side yard be adopted.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion?
Just a quick one. There are probably other instances over the last four or five years where we've improved our ordinances to take into account things that have just changed over time where we're attempting to make the city a nicer place around the home and the homes around it. Siding, trees, sightlines, other things that we've changed to?
Setbacks.
Setbacks, other things where we've changed the ordinances in order to improve the general condition of the city. And this is probably going to be one of those where we've just changed things for the general improvement of the city.
I'm gonna count on your neighbors being?
Yes.
Very accepting. And I'm gonna count on your equipment. You've got good equipment that's going to last for a while.
Well, and one of the things with generators, it almost does not matter where they are.
It's so loud.
It's like, if it's fifteen feet back there, I mean, my, it's, it's going to have the same impact. So I would think that discussion with your neighbor would, especially since he's a landlord, would make it a much more easy conversation of, you know, "If I move it over here, it's really not going to change the situation. So can I please leave it there?" Because I have an air conditioner that is in the side yard situation and I've, through two different neighbors, been able to talk to them about leaving mine there. You know, in that, in this situation. And I, you're charming, you'll be. I think you'll be.
That's kind of you. But I mean, that, the comment cuts both ways, and that is, then what's the point of the change? If it really doesn't make a difference where I put the generator, that it's so loud that it's going to be heard no matter where you put it, then why am I moving it? And this to Commissioner Scott's point, if you're trying to improve the neighborhood and the city, this, from a public policy standpoint, this doesn't really seem to accomplish that for a whole home generator. Because no matter where I put it, it's just going to be loud. There's nothing I can do about it. It's a nature of a generator. So, for the air conditioner, yeah, it makes sense. It's running all the time. But for a generator, it really doesn't matter where I put it. So you're gonna, again, presuming, and I sometimes operate in, well, what's the worst thing that could happen? The worst thing that could happen is a tree falls on it tomorrow. I go to my landlord or my next door neighbor and he says, "No, I don't, I don't want that there." And now I've got to put it back here for no good reason. It's not gonna improve the beautification of the house, the neighborhood. And all it's done is move the sound from one place to another and without really changing the ambient quality of the sound in the neighborhood. It doesn't, again, just from purely public policy standpoint, if the public policy is to make it better for the neighborhood, I don't think this does that. With all due respect, I don't think it does it.
The sound piece isn't for the generators, correct?
The sound piece does not apply to generators, just the location.
Right.
There's still a sightline issue though.
Yes, exactly.
Sure. Any further? Right, right. Okay. Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is item number nine, Consent Agenda. We have four items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Support?
Support.
Sorry.
Give it to the new guy.
Give it to the guy. Sorry.
Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is the annual meeting schedule for the following commissions. The City Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Commission, DDA, and Recreation Commission. Is there anything you wanted to say, Amy, or just, I know we've got the list of dates?
Just the annual meeting schedule. It mirrors the last several years' meeting schedules. Planning and Recreation will meet quarterly. Planning on the fourth Monday and then Recreation on the last Wednesday. Historical Commission, their schedule is a little, little different. So January, March, April, May, June, September, October and November. And they meet the first Wednesday of the month. And then City Commission, they remain on the second Tuesday of every month. The only date that is proposed to be changed is the March meeting, which would be held March tenth, which is also the day of the presidential primary. So I wouldn't want anyone to have to decide whether they want to be here. So we changed that meeting day to March seventeenth.
Great.
There's no discussion. Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the 2020 annual meeting schedule for the City Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Commission/Downtown Development Authority, and the Recreation Commission be approved.
Is there support?
Suck it.
May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Item eleven is organizational items. Please sit back in your chairs. I get to read a little bit and then just, just stick with me. We just have to go through this. First, establishment of the second Tuesday of each month at seven-thirty PM as the regular City Commission meeting day, with the exception of March. B, adoption of Robert's Rules of Order for the City Commission and other city-appointed bodies. C, appointment of Commissioner Brett Scott as Deputy Mayor, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Congratulations. Appointment to Commissioner Brett Scott as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Police Board, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of Commissioner Amanda Wall as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of Commissioner Ann Perry as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority, the Woodward Avenue Action Association Executive Board, and the Woodward Avenue Transit Committee, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of Commissioner Brett Scott as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of Commissioner Chris Budnick as representative to the Ferndale Public Schools Superintendent's Advisory Committee, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as legislative coordinator to the Michigan Municipal League. Appointment of Mr. Charles Digby as the Pleasant Ridge Police Commissioner, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of City Manager James Bruckman as the City Representative and City Clerk Amy Allison as alternate to the Intergovernmental Cable Communications Authority, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger, Commissioner Brett Scott, City Manager James Bruckman, and City Clerk Amy Allison as this city's representatives to the Fire Protection Agreement Committee, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of City Manager James Bruckman as delegate and City Clerk Amy Allison as alternate to the Woodward Dream Cruise Board of Directors, term to expire November ninth, 2021. Appointment of City Manager James Bruckman as delegate and DPW Supervisor Timothy Schultz as alternate to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, SACRA Board of Trustees. Appointment of City Manager James Bruckman as delegate and DPW Supervisor Timothy Schultz as alternate to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, SACWA Board of Directors. Appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as the city's delegate representative and City Manager James Bruckman as the city's alternate representative to the General Assembly Board of the Southeast Michigan Council of Government, or SEMCOG. Appointment of City Manager James Bruckman as Act Fifty-One Administrator for the City of Pleasant Ridge. Appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as delegate and City Manager James Bruckman as alternate to the annual meeting of the Michigan Municipal League to be held annually. Appointment of Amy M. Allison as Officer Delegate to the Municipal Employees Retirement Systems, MERS Annual Meeting, to be held annually. Almost there. Appointment of City Manager James Bruckman as the city's delegate representative of the Woodward Avenue Action Association Board of Directors. Do I have a motion to approve all that stuff, please?
Should we read the whole thing?
Yes, would you please read the whole?
Your Honor, I move items eleven A through eleven T regarding the organization of the 2020 through 2022 Pleasant Ridge City Commission be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion approved. Next item, City Managers Report.
Yes. One thing I wanted to highlight, and we actually just pushed this to the website today. We'll be publicizing it more. Get this up here. Is an exciting project we have coming for next year. So, we've been working with the city with some architects, the same ones who did the community center big room and the room we're sitting in right here and now, to do some conceptual design work for pavilions to be constructed at the pool in the park green space along Woodside and at Gainesboro Park. These projects were both identified as priorities in the latest Parks and Rec master plan. And so we've been working towards getting these constructed. So the images are kind of scrolling through. I'm just, I have the website up here that shows where these are located. So that's the Gainesboro location next to the shelter. That's the actual pavilion itself and the concept design. So sort of a mid-century modern-inspired design. It would come off the side of the existing shelter building. And then we've got the location here for the, the location by the pool, more of a traditionally styled pavilion with the pitched roof and some of the traditional design details. These were both inspired, I guess, by the surrounding architecture. The east side is, is traditional, of course, but there's more mid-century modern homes that exist over on that side. And I think with the pitched roof, already the pitched roof building doing a pitched roof pavilion next to the pitched roof shelter, I don't think the architects wanted to do that. It's pretty pitchy. So they wanted, I think, the idea is with the flat roof, it looks like an extension of the building and you can build in the mid-century modern look. While the pavilion that's on the west side, it's gonna be on, right on Woodside Park, close to Ridge Road, so highly visible location with a really very traditional character of the, really the revival-style architecture of all of the homes that are around there. So that was the intent. Also, on the website, you can click on this notice, we have a video on here, which I'm not gonna play now because it's ten minutes long. So, go check out the website on your own time. But the architects walk through these images and more and talk about sort of their design inspiration and what these are intended to accomplish and what the thinking was behind them. So, we're entering, we've reviewed these and we're entering detailed design right now. There's still time. If you have comments or questions or suggestions, email those to me at citymanager@cityofpleasantridge.org. And we'll be finalizing these designs and getting the detailed design work going here in the next probably three weeks. So the idea is we'll get these done and then get them built next year. My, my hope is that we can start with the pool pavilion and get that ideally, in a perfect world, finished before pool season starts.
Wow.
So that we can have that ready to go.
It's aggressive. I like it.
It is aggressive, but we're gonna try to make it happen. I'm also happy to report, I don't know if I'm stealing anyone's thunder here, but the foundation has met and they've looked at these and I don't know if you wanna?
I was gonna talk about it.
Yeah. Go for it.
Okay, so the auction this year is gonna be supporting the pavilion. So all the proceeds will be going to get the, help get these pavilions built.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. And I just, I'm gonna segue. We're having a common volunteer, volunteer drive, January sixteenth at the rec center. It's gonna be fun. There's gonna be hors d'oeuvres, adult beverages, and you can give your opinion. You can see how you can get involved. The foundation needs help with the auction. It's a Herculean effort of a lot of people. And please come and support it and come to this event and see, you know, more about what we can do and, you know, find out more.
Yeah. I mean, we watch what you guys go through every year to put that on and it's a big task and it takes many hands, so.
Yeah, but it gets a lot. I mean, the foundation does so many projects that get a lot of important things done in the city. I mean, it really makes a huge difference. It's not like a drop in the bucket. It's, it's a Kickstarter for a lot of big projects that have happened in the city, like Gainesboro Park, the rec center renovation, the, you know, the outside area. I mean, those are all things that the foundation had a big hand in.
Yes.
I really, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the fact the foundation is actually gonna have this event.
Oh, yeah.
So that people can really get, instead of just, you know, kind of just, we need help.
No, it's a learn. Yeah, learn, learn.
And an encouragement for people to get engaged in it.
Yeah, and find out more. I mean, we'll sit and talk. Yeah, and find out more. I mean, we'll sit and talk to you, you know, figure out where your skill sets best used.
Right. And the other thing I would add is also with the foundation's help, we know we need new pool furniture. We limped through this year with what we had because it was just, we couldn't get anything for this pool season. But we are getting new pool furniture for next year.
Wow, that's exciting.
The foundation has pledged to support, I think it's $50,000 or up to 25%, whichever is less, I think, to the pavilion projects and the pool furniture. So, I mean, the foundation's a great partner in helping us stretch what we can do together.
Wonderful.
That's awesome.
So, anyone have any questions or input, comment on these?
Go watch the video.
Yeah.
Yeah, go watch the video.
The video's cool because listening to the architects talk about it is sort of, it's funny and fun. Because it is interesting to see the influences. You definitely notice it when you're looking at the drawings. It's, they're beautiful. Thank you.
It's so carefully considered.
Yes. A couple other things. You'll notice in the, the Gainesboro Park one, there is a fireplace and there is a grill that are built into that. So those will be available. I think that with this now, we probably, and we've, Shawnee and I have talked about this, we probably will start to do reservations. So if you're having a party, you'll be able to, to reserve that. We probably will have to figure out a way to secure the grill so it's not open all the time because we don't want to be cleaning up charcoal messes and everything. But that'll be available for city events, and also if you rent the pavilion, you'll be able to use that grill along with it. And then I think we may also look at taking reservations for the pool shelter, the pool pavilion as well. So if you're having a birthday party, there will be a space that you can reserve ahead of time because, you know, it's sort of like Black Friday now. If you're having a party and you wanna, and many times, you know, you wanna do your party at the pool so the kids can, you know, have fun there. You gotta get there, you know, be in line when it opens to kind of stake out your space. We see that happen, so.
Wasn't sure where he was going with that.
Yeah. So, so I think with this now, we'll, we'll have a space that we can start to reserve out. So, you know, hopefully, these will be nice amenities, but it'll also be something that we can maybe reduce some, some heartburn for residents who are having events.
That's great.
Don't have to scramble and remove some of that uncertainty as well.
That will be great.
That's nice.
I don't want to talk about leaves, so that's it.
Ah, we were all hoping.
Means we have a question about leaves.
We were all hoping of that.
Almost done?
Almost done.
Great.
Any questions for the city manager?
I do have a couple quick questions. How is the traffic reconfiguration at 696 going? The one across 10 Mile?
I think it's settling in. I think people are getting used to it. I, I, you know, if you're a pedestrian and you've crossed there, it's certainly a lot easier now to cross because it's half the, the distance it used to be. You have more of a head start, you know, on where traffic is, so you're more visible. So I think it accomplished the goal of making that crossing easier. You know, my, my own anecdotal sort of experiences, if you're coming on the westbound service drive to get on 696, if you know to stay in the right two lanes, it's actually much easier to get through that intersection now.
Right, right.
So I think that's been an improvement. I think that it, you know, I don't know if it's improved the experience of trying to turn left onto Woodward or Main Street because that was the other thing that MDOT did was expand the stacking distance for those turn lanes onto Woodward. I know that, you know, if you're kind of taking the back route and going up Sherman through Oak Park to hit the turnaround that's by the zoo to go west on the service drive, some, some, some of us may have made that movement. It used to be easy because that was behind the stacking for Woodward. Now the stacking for Woodward goes through that turnaround.
Okay.
That's probably a, somewhat of a loss. But, you know, I, I, I think it's, you know, just from experiencing it and driving through it, I, I like it, and I think it's improved things a little bit. I think, you know, the one thing that we saw was initially where that island came down a little bit, took that one lane south at Main Street, where now both of those lanes have to turn on the main. It used to be an option lane where you could go through or turn. So a lot of people are in that lane trying to get on the 696. And I go out and watch traffic. It's a professional hazard, I guess. Just to see how that's, and, and over time, I think you see fewer cars that kind of get up there and stop and then have to try to get over to get on 696. That seems to be resolving itself over time. People get used to that new traffic pattern. So I, we definitely had an increase in, in, in accidents up there for a little while, while people got used to it.
Right.
I, again, I think that's loosening up a little bit.
Yeah. Because you still have people doing absolutely crazy stuff that they were doing when there was the additional lane of just like zooming through. Yeah. And then we're still getting additional, like, street light at the crossing at Main Street.
Yeah, DTE is, you know, on DTE's schedule, going to be doing some street lighting improvements there.
Okay, that's cool.
So there'll be a little bit more light at that intersection.
And then I know it's still super new, like you were saying, that there, you know, the barrels are still there waiting to go. How is the traffic flow going on southbound Woodward, south to 10 Mile, up to like Oakland Park Boulevard?
I, I haven't really noticed anything.
Great. And you guys are right there, so you would hear.
That one, we don't have to go watch traffic.
Right.
But I haven't noticed anything with that. And I think, I think with the barrels being up and that lane being closed for so long, you almost don't remember what it was like before.
Right.
So now when they pulled the barrels back, you know, I, I've only seen one or two cars that kind of get like, oh, stuck, you know, in the lane because it ends now.
Yeah.
They were supposed to be putting up signage. I don't know if the signs are in yet north of, you know, they're saying the lane ends and the striping is on the street, but.
Is all the striping down?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, cool. Were you saying, are there pillar thingies that are going up? No? Okay.
No, but that, that's something that we might want to look at. We'll see.
Okay.
Or it could just be one of the Chevron signs like we have at the island by the school. Where we just have that little Chevron sign that kind of points you. You know, it identifies that, you know, there's something here. Get over.
That's enough.
One of those might just be good. I think, you know, for that one, when MDOT gets everything restored, and then we'll take a look at it.
Cool.
Might just appear there.
Good. It looks really good.
Yeah, and, and I know that the crossing experience, the crossing when you're on Woodward, crossing Oakland Park, I mean, that's dramatically shorter.
Thank goodness.
And the angle, you know, when you're crossing on the, when you're crossing Woodward on the north side, the angle is much better now. It's shorter. So I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be, make that crossing, which is under the best circumstances, a little uncomfortable. It's gonna make it a little more comfortable for pedestrians.
And it forces people to look.
Right.
You're paying attention anyway.
Right. Because we've always had far more problems on the west side of this intersection than the east side. Because the east side is just four lanes on Woodward and the turns, you know, at the, the visibility for pedestrians because they're a little further out from the intersection and stop bars on Sylvan. The, all of the issues we see are, were on the west side with pedestrians because the geometry over here was, was very, very auto-biased. So. We're hopeful that it, that it takes, you know, it's a little improvement, but it's an improvement.
That's great. Yeah, and I think people were, you know, up in arms, you know, whenever a project's going on, you lose an extra, extra lane. And so it was, but now it's like, like you're saying, the flow seems to have, you know, readjusted.
Right. And I think that, you know, I think the, the interesting thing was that losing the lane along this segment of Woodward didn't really impact anything. I think it, when they, because they continued the closure all the way to the north, to the westbound service drive, all the way through the bridge, I think you saw some impact for everyone who was trying to turn off of, coming on westbound Woodward, or westbound 696, getting off at the Woodward exit and then trying to make that south turn onto, onto Woodward, where you lost that lane, I think it created backups there. So that was an impact. That was a real impact, and I think that negatively impacted traffic. But once you got south of, you know, the, the 696 thing on Woodward, everything functioned fine. So that was interesting. We kept our eye closely on that because in the future, we would like to extend the closure further north. So that's something that we'll continue to work on.
Cool.
But, you know, probably not through the intersection.
Right.
Just to maintain that capacity of getting cars through that intersection, because that's where the choke point was.
Yeah. And I just noticed, making the U-turn heading north to south on Woodward is more comfortable. Walking across the street, heading, I guess, west on the south side of Woodward is more comfortable. It's all more comfortable.
Yeah.
The only thing that seems to have increased, and it may just be light timing, is the speed going eastbound onto 696 seems to have gone up just because of the way the lights are timed.
Yeah.
The last light to turn green is the one, the westbound light. So everyone's flying. If you're turning into the alley, it just feels a little uncomfortable because there's no alley lane now.
Right.
But other than that, yeah.
Yeah. You just have to work your brakes a little harder. At least there's the taper.
Exactly.
There, so, but yeah, yes.
Yeah. Cool.
And the repaving is very nice.
Oh, my goodness.
It's so smooth.
Partially why people are speeding now.
Try it, try it. It's very nice. Any other questions for Jim? All right, let's move on to other business. Anybody got a book report? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, my God.
Just a quick one. For the Historical Commission, the museum will be open on the 21st. We have a holiday setting that you might have seen as a child on your, on your fireplace mantel. We have set up in the museum, and it's really nice. If you have kids, or even if you're a kid at heart, just come in and check out the display. It was open during the tree lighting, and it'll be open for the 21st. And I think we're out of tiles. We might have one left.
We're out.
I think we're out, so see you again in 100 years. We'll, we'll have another tile and another color in 100 years. Celebrate the 200th anniversary.
No more? You're not gonna?
What are we gonna do in 1927? I mean, I mean, in, in, when we hit the 100th as a city, are we gonna celebrate that?
Get some balloons over here and.
The latest edition of Wikipedia doesn't have us in 1919.
Okay.
It has us in some other date, which I can't quite figure.
You'll have to go in and fix that.
We're gonna have to go fix Wikipedia.
We can fix it.
I will, I will get my editing shoes on.
Go check, check it out.
But they will ask you to pay $2.19 a month.
I think that's it.
To do that. Such a deal.
Okay.
They're begging and pleading right at the moment for.
Yeah.
The Planning Commission and DDA will meet on Monday, January 27th, right here at City Hall at 7 o'clock.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
I want to talk about the Wellness Center. The hours are different. Holiday hours will be five, the FOBs will be working 5:00 AM to midnight, closed Christmas Eve Day and Christmas Day. Just a little warning, just gently, please don't wear muddy shoes in the Wellness Center. I guess there's been some problems with muddy, salty shoes, not, you know, we had snow recently. And another exciting situation, the, the Ridders coming very soon. Watch your mailboxes. That's it.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you.
One additional thing, I guess we'll just, we'll, we will be making junior commission appointments in January. We push this out on the website. We'll push it out again. If you're interested in getting involved with the city, we have openings on the Recreation and Planning Commission slash DDA. So the application form is on the website. You can see the news post on the front page. And you can also get one here at City Hall. And then at the Wellness Center, we did have a roof issue over the workout facility. So we're looking at a new roof, and also we had to do two new four and five-ton HVAC units on the roof. So it's been a fun winter over there, but, you know, we're getting it done.
Is it okay with, when we have rain and stuff right now? Is anything coming in?
It's fine. It's fine. The roof, the roof is not compromised, but we get ice dams. And so we need to get those ice dams. When we had the issues, when we had that snow in November, and we had an ice dam buildup, just the way it's designed. And, and so we, we have that issue, and it's also getting to the end of its useful life. It's getting closer, close to 20 years old, so for a flat roof.
I am familiar.
Architectural hubris.
What's the deadline for the applications? I'm sorry, for the junior commission application things?
So I think on the website. The deadline is... I closed it. You got it?
Here, let me find it.
January 14th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, it says January 14th is the deadline?
Well, it says the City Commission will review, no, it says the City Commission will review the applications and make appointments at the January 14 meeting. So practically January 7th.
All right.
Okay.
January 7th.
Just a week before the meeting.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. And what were the, what did you say again, Amy or Jim?
There is one opening on planning and two openings on recreation.
Thank you.
Any other items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
That's our hope.